I think we have Mr. Parker, don't we?
Yes, we do.
Hello.
Hi Ted.
Hi. Hi, everyone.
Um, can I have the mic? I believe I heard Councilman Robinson join from the conference call line.
Yep, I'm here. I'm on the, on the, the LoTAC.
Yeah, that's all right. Hi Scott, how you doing? We're multimedia tonight. Actually, before Mr. Parker starts us off, if I could just remind everybody that it's important, given this medium, that we don't interrupt each other, talk over each other, not that no one in this group would do that, but just to keep the recording straight, keep it straight for the record, because every time somebody starts to speak or makes a noise, it's going to jump to the new person. Mr. Parker, would you like to start us off?
Sure.
You want to give it another minute or so?
Um, who's on? Do we have a, we have enough people or?
We have a quorum.
We have a quorum, okay. Uh, we'll give it a minute or two. Who are we missing?
I believe we're missing Ms. Drysbaugh.
Okay.
Ms. Drysbaugh, are you on the conference call line? No, I think we're missing Ms. Drysbaugh. Mr. Parker joined, so Mr. Paul. Uh, how about Mayor Ravellows? Mayor Ravellon? Mayor? Not yet. Okay.
And I guess we'll get started. Unless you think we should wait a minute or two.
Oh, plus I think our junior councilperson was going to join.
Right.
Victoria, are you with us now?
Yes, I'm on the line.
Oh, great. Good. Thank you.
Ted, I don't know if you were going to do a pledge of allegiance, but if we do that, I would suggest we either do it standing down, uh, or not at all, because I don't think the viewers at home will be getting a good view if we all stand up.
Yeah, I'm, uh, I'm Zoom dressed, so, uh, yeah. Um, I, you can put your hand over the camera if you want. I mean, I'm going to do it. I'm going to do a moment of silence as well, just so everybody knows, um, for the, you know, for the victims of, of the pandemic. Um, and then I guess we'll do a pledge of allegiance. If you, if you're not comfortable, you can
I was just, yeah, I was just going to cover the, yeah, computer.
Yeah, I had a tough time getting on my computer and I ended up having to use my phone, so hopefully.
My nurse, Paralegal, who's, who's, who worked with us for 20 years, and then she, she has, she got a BSN and a master's degree in nursing, and she's our consultant. She's been taking care of, she's the director of nursing over at Attleboro, the rehab, and she now is at home. She's on her second week recovering from COVID. Uh, and she said she feels, she felt like she was at like the greatest party in the world the night before, and then the next day, she felt, and that's what it feels like she got, you know, so.
All right. So I'm going to call the meeting to order. All right, we're going to call this meeting to order for the May 18th, 2020 meeting, uh, regular council meeting of Marsville Borough. Um, can we please stand for a moment of silence and the pledge of allegiance? And in this moment of silence, I'd like us to remember all the victims of the COVID-19 pandemic. Uh, I have personal knowledge that it is, uh, a very devastating disease and a very deadly disease, and let's remember all of those who have suffered and those of us, those of those who have perished because of this. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. All right, forgive me one minute. I had an incoming phone call that knocked us off. Um, okay. Uh, can we have a roll call, please?
Mayor Ravella. Mr. Bowers.
Here.
Ms. Drysbaugh. Ms. Halaal.
Here.
Mr. Parker.
Here.
Mr. Paul.
Here.
Mr. Robinson.
Here.
Ms. Sherlock.
Here.
Mr. Jaeger.
Here.
And we have Victoria Sullivan on the conference call line, our junior councilperson.
Hello.
Hi.
Okay, uh, we're going to move on, uh, to announcements and presentations. Uh, 4A is the presentation of the annual DCED audit by Barricane Thornton and Company.
Yes, uh, Mr. President, uh, Tim Sawyer is on the video conference with us from, uh, the audit firm, and his presentation document is available, I believe if you go down to your, uh, toolbar at the bottom, you can, into chat, you can find not only the meeting agenda, but also his presentation. Um, we can also include a copy of it in your Friday delivery, but Tim, you want to hit the highlights for us?
Okay, glad to. Well, good evening, everyone. So, uh, you know, my name is, uh, Tim Sawyer. I'm the partner of Barricane Thornton and Company that's on your account. This is our, third year doing the audit. Um, and I'd like to say, as we get started here, the, uh, we've gotten much better since the, the first year we came in, uh, as far as timing goes. This year, the COVID-19 kind of got us. We were right about done field work, uh, when everybody kind of went home and sheltered. Um, so with that, we, uh, uh, the DCD did not extend the deadline, but they did waive any penalties for, uh, people that didn't make the April 1st, um, filing, and obviously with everybody kind of scattered, we had a little bit of a delay, but, uh, your report has been filed. Um, if you're looking at the audit results, I'm on page, uh, the first page, where we have the, uh, areas of interest and the results. So I'm looking at the audit timeline. So March 9th through the 20th, we were actually at the borough doing our onsite testing. Uh, April 9th is the date of our audit report, uh, which is basically the date that it was finished, and it's also the date that we submitted the electronic copy to DCED. Uh, and then of course, tonight, on the 18th, we're doing the presentation. As far as the audit goes, we do take a based approach. We take a look at areas of greater risk, uh, and so we then take, document your controls and procedures, uh, look at, uh, how they're operating, uh, also do an analytical review, uh, of the account balances, and as well as testing details. Uh, when we look at those, we do controls around your cash receipts, cash disbursements and payroll, which are your three biggest areas, um, and also look to see if you have proper inclusion of your capital assets on, there's a statement of capital expenditures on the DCD reports. We look to make sure you pick up everything there. Uh, and then the, another one big area that we take a look at is for your real estate tax revenue, and make sure that's allocated correctly between the general and special revenue funds. Uh, so as a result of our audit work, we issued, uh, an adverse opinion on the financial statements, because the DCD report is not, uh, generally accepted accounting principles. The reason it is not is it's a prescribed form that the state of Pennsylvania puts out, uh, so that they can collect all the information for all the different municipalities, whether they're cash basis or modified accrual basis, and it's all in the same line, so it's easy for them to take a statewide look at everything when they, they do it, or county by county. Um, we did issue an unmodified or clean opinion on the DCD, so as far as you were concerned, you've got a clean bill of health with there. Uh, then I also, as part of the audit, we do an audit on the library fund and its standalone statements, and we also issued an unmodified opinion on the library fund. So you've got clean and clean audit opinions. Uh, the last box on that first page there, we talk about, uh, management with, uh, Scott and Micah and the finance team, uh, being helpful and forthcoming with all the information we needed. Uh, of course, we'd like to let you know that we are available year round for any questions. Uh, and, uh, the big one is the last bullet point there, uh, where we'd like to let you know that our testing of, of the transactions of the borough this year, we did not reveal any indications of fraud or illegal acts or, uh, any, any compliance issues, so it's always a good thing. The next page, we take a look at your cash balances, and it's in a chart form, so you have 2019 compared to 2018. So overall, your total cash, uh, in 2018 was 1.7 million, and you're down to 1.5 million at the end of 19, but you had a lot of, uh, uh, expenditures related to some, some, some capital projects. And you can see that the capital project balance and cash did go down from 312 to 243. Uh, so we've broken at this out here. These are also, if you look at this here, it's the, we've got the general fund, special revenue fund, capital projects funded service fund, and then the escrow funds making up your total cash balances. But just so you know, that there are multiple funds that go into each of those columns. So the general fund is seven funds combined, special revenue is 22 funds combined. Uh, there are two capital project funds, uh, one debt service fund, and then all the escrow, the escrow, uh, funds. Next page shows your major and total revenues. Uh, so overall, you're at, uh, 6.5 the year before and 6.4 this year, so you're pretty much on, on target where you were the two years. Uh, you can see your, um, little bit of a dip in your intergovernmental revenues, which are basically a lot of your grants, and a little bit in the charges for services. Um, but like I said, for the most part, right on with what you had the year before. Your major and total expenditures, again, just to give, uh, let you know, these are across all funds, so when I was mentioning those funds before, uh, you know, there's 32 different funds that combine to make these numbers, and these numbers, if you're looking at the actual DCD report, and you go to the very last column in each section, uh, it's a total by fund, uh, you can also kind of correlate these numbers in here. So if you're looking at general expenditures for the general government, 909,000, uh, that there's 10 different lines that make up that, 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 that number. Um, but as you can see, so you're at 6.7 the year before, 6.9 million for 2019. Uh, most of the categories, not too much of a jump anywhere around, except for the general government, and, uh, the biggest thing there had to do with, uh, was, uh, additional engineering costs associated with Somerset Park that are in that, uh, one of the, one of the line items under general government is engineering. Uh, so that's part of the real big increase there. The next page goes over your fund balances, uh, and you were at 1.5 total fund balance in 18, and you're down to 947,000 this year, so we had about a $600,000 decrease. You can see the general fund's about the same, capital projects are down a little bit, uh, and the special revenue funds, uh, have, uh, pretty much gone away between the activity and there's, there's 22 different, different funds. You're just a tad bit below zero there. The next, uh, page shows your library fund. So like I said, we do separate-ish, uh, statements on the library fund, so this compares just the library fund, uh, in the two years. So your assets are 53,000 last year, there's 37 now. Your liabilities and deferred inflows are about the same at 15,000 compared to 16,000. Fund balance is down a little bit from 37 down to 22, uh, but you can see your revenue stayed about the same while there was a little bit of an, uh, uptick in the expenses from 218 to 242. So, and that is your brief and high-level overview, uh, of the statements. If anybody has had a chance to look at the DCED report, uh, or if you have any questions on anything, I'd be glad to answer anything if I can. So the, it's a clean audit, it's really no surprises, and if the numbers I'm looking at are correct, this might be editorial, editorializing a little bit, but it's actually the least worst year financially in the last five years, except for one, and that was the year the borough had that big windfall and, uh, bad debt collection from, uh, Portnoy, which was of course, an anomaly, so.
Ben, I, I don't know how you're taking questions, like, can I, can I ask a question now, or?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay. Um, I'll, I'll work backwards. With regards to library, uh, you're absolutely right. With, we, we had a, we had a high balance forward, which managed to give us a, uh, pretty decent figure end of year, even though we came up short. So, uh, I mean, that, that was, that was good. But the library always sort of is a lot of in and out, except for on occasion. But I do have a question about, um, Mr. Sawyer, you mentioned, uh, the $600,000 difference. I'm guessing that that might be what's reflected on page 16. Uh, it's $591,000, uh, expenses over, over revenue. Is that what you were referring to, or is that something different?
Right, no, that, that is, that's the, that's the, when you're looking at the overall change in the fund balance, yes, that's the, that's the number. I was just going with a rounded number, but yes.
Right.
So you can see, if, if you're on that line all the way across, then you can see the different funds. So the general fund, uh, was about break even and had a $5,300 profit, if you will. The special revenue funds, uh, had 470,000 of that loss. Then you had your capital projects, uh, which contributed to 70,000, and then the debt service fund, uh, 26. When we're talking profit and loss, it just means that we, we have the loss, I mean, just means your expenditures were more than your revenues for the year in that, uh, in that fund. So with, uh, obviously, capital projects, when you have the projects going on, if you've gotten the funding already and it's, it's, it's sitting there, or if, you know, you're, you're expected to have the big outlays, it's, it's not a surprise to sometimes see that fund have a, a negative, uh.
Okay. Thank you.
So just so, I thought that we had a 300,000 surplus in 2018 going into 2018, so did, did the expenditures actually go through the surplus plus now we're 500 and, um, less?
I believe there was a surplus from 17 into 18, if I have the years correct off the top of my head. That was, it was not as much as the number you just cited, and that was the windfall and bad debt collection from Portnoy.
And, uh, for 2018, uh, which I have handy at my fingertips, it was a $247,000 loss. So, yeah, so the Portnoy must have been in 17.
You're, you're very consistent, because that's on page 16 also, of the 18, of 2018.
Mr. Sawyer, did I hear you correctly? You said the general fund, we had more income than revenue this year, slightly?
Yeah, yeah, uh, yeah, $5,300 more of, uh, revenue than expenditures in the general fund.
Okay.
Scott, is there, is there something coming in 2020 that didn't hit in 2019?
I'm sorry, I couldn't, was your question directed to me?
Yeah, is there, is there, like, he, he has, that, you know, we're at a $500,000 loss, so is there some revenue or grant money that's coming in 2020 that, that would offset that, or, and we don't have it yet, or? No?
No. I mean, there, there's grant money coming that we're hoping to have to use for capital projects, but it's not something that would, uh, skew the result at all.
Okay. So it's not 2019 expenditures. The 2020 would be 2020 expenditures. Okay.
Yep. We, we book it when we receive it, or we book it when we spend it.
Got it.
Uh, may I have one?
Just a, for, for your edification, because you're new, the revenue, uh, so to speak, has been fairly flat the last, uh, three or four years, because the borough hasn't done a tax increase during that time, so, uh, revenue, revenue has been fairly stagnant.
So if we continue and we don't do any remainder of 2020, we're going to have a $500,000, um, loss at the end of 2020, correct?
Well, we're gonna, we're gonna have some kind of loss at some point, yes. We, we are continually, continually looking at, uh, revenue versus expenses, so that we can trim out, delay, uh, whatever we can to try to keep, uh, finances in, in good order. But in an organization like this, where you have your, your revenue flat for three, four years now, but yet your expenses go up incrementally every year, and you know what they are, because it's contractual obligations, it's healthcare costs, it's, you know, yada, yada, yada. Um, re, revenue is not keeping pace with expenses.
So I was looking at 2019, um, financial statements, and, um, the, the big ones that I see that make up that 500,000 is really code enforcement and engineering costs, correct?
Uh, if I can add, that I was hoping that that would be part of our conversation as we got into our regular meeting, but I would say, yes. When you look at the percents.
Because he just said that this general fund isn't the problem. We have more money in the general fund than we spent. So, uh, it probably goes back to, Scott, would you agree if I said it goes back to budget time, when you had, uh, suggested increases in the street fund and the library fund and the lighting fund?
Yes, we, we recommended, I believe it was, um, what, six and a half mils or something like that, uh, of an increase, but, um, there was not enough of an appetite for it at the time. That six and a half mils is going to turn into eight and a half to 10 mils this fall. That we'll be asking for, for next year.
And when you look at our, our year-end financial, we're actually, we came in 11,000 under. We started the year with minus $11,000. So on top of the large figure that we talked about, due to the expenses. I, I'd just like to comment, Mr. Sawyer had made some recommendations, I think, hopefully with the new system, that that will, uh, a lot of those will be accommodated.
Oh, yes.
So, um, I'm hoping that we do those. He did off, also mention needing a second eye. Um, I think that's something we should try to consider, and.
Yeah, that, if I could interject, uh, is actually something we've been talking about for, uh, a while now, is, and it's, yes, it's a second eye, but it's more than that, because it's also an independent for management, second eye.
Mm-hmm. I agree.
Uh, which I think, uh, dual control, you might have heard the phrase, it's used in banking a lot. Dual control is always better situation to help avoid any situations of fraud abuse, you know, anything like that. So we're recommending that we start it this year. We've been talking to Tim, uh, and his people informally about it, and it is something we would like to do. I believe we included something in the council delivery a couple of weeks back on this.
With dual control, I'm assuming that costs more money.
Right, of course.
Yeah, that it will look at for free, Justin. I'm sorry. You get it, right?
Yeah, I can twist Tim's arm, but only so far.
Can we roll over his expenses, his travel expenses he didn't have to have this year for our meeting?
No, because they were here for two weeks and then COVID started. I'm like, why couldn't this have been?
But he didn't have to drive all the way back for this meeting.
That's true, that's true. Saving a little, us a little money tonight, yeah. See, Randy, it's not just you who takes the abuse. It gets passed around.
Okay. Any other questions?
Not, not at this time.
Okay.
Not for me.
All right. So thank you. We're going to move on.
Okay.
Thanks, Tim, but I, I, I think actually, in case it comes up later, I think Tim's going to stick around for a few minutes.
I'm going to stick around. I'll, I'll go on mute for now, though.
Thanks, Tim.
Okay, uh, we're going to move on to five, which is public comment.
We received no public comment by email, but, uh, do we have anyone on the conference call line that wishes to make public comment?
Miss, uh, Mr. Parker. There wasn't.
Anyone on the conference call line at all? Scott, are you still there?
Yeah.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure we didn't get disconnected.
Uh, Mr.
Oh, yeah, yeah, it'll just put you right back in.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay.
Uh, Mr.
Ms. Sherlock, you had a question?
Scott and Mr. Parker. I was trying to address Mr. Parker, but it is a question from Scott. Uh, there was an email that I received at 4:27. Um, it came from Sue, and it said that, uh, we had a, a woman in, um, in the second ward who has questions about what we're going to do and how we're going to do, um, the Patriots Park. So I, I just told Sue that those questions, I guess, will be answered later on this evening, so, um, the, the response, there was no immediate response. I didn't even read it until six, six o'clock.
Okay. Yeah, I, I don't think that was public comment related to the meeting. I think she was just in general reaching out to her council members, but.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. Sorry, Mr. Parker, back to you, but I don't, it doesn't appear as though we have a public comment.
Okay, so we're going to close public comment, move on. Uh, six approval in the minutes. I don't see any, so I assume we're not, uh, we have nothing.
None tonight.
Okay. All right, we're moving on to, moving on to seven. Uh, 7A is the treasurer's report, which everyone gets in their packet. Uh, 7B, a call for a motion to approve the bill list and pay bills for March. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
All moved. Second. Let's do that again.
Nancy can have the mute. I'll take a second.
All right, any discussion?
Um, just, I had a couple of questions about, if I may. I'll try to be brief.
Please.
Um, the, I saw that, um, Scott, you're now bonded. There was a bond. Now is that done? Is that a renewal every year, or how does that work?
Uh, I'm bonded annually.
That's, so it's a, it's a $500 cost every year to, to be bonded?
It renews annually.
Okay.
And also, the finance director is bonded, and that renews annually.
Which is separate. So that's another, is that the same amount of money? Do you know, or about?
No, there's a separate cost for, I believe his is at a lower threshold. I think his is around 300 or 350.
Okay.
And I think mine is at 500.
And I think the rest will just come up as we discuss different subjects.
I actually, I actually have a, I don't know if, I think it was the April bill list. I know we're doing the March bill list, um, but, uh, uh, you, uh, the police budget for uniforms. There was a $10,400 bill. What is that? It seems like an awful lot of money for uniforms.
That's the annual uniform allowance that the police officers receive. The chief, the chief, you, the chief usually goes to the uniform vendor once a year, and he gets them purchase cards for the amount that they're each allowed as per the collective bargaining agreement, and he gives them their purchase cards and they use them as they need them, as, that, to, to draw down on their, uh, uniform allowance.
That's for everybody, Helen.
Yeah, I got that one. Yeah, okay.
That, that's a contractual obligation.
Yes. Anything else? All right, can I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Bowers?
Yes.
Mrs. Drysbaugh?
Yes.
Ms. Laho?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Paul?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson? Mrs. Sherlock?
Yes.
And Mr. Jaeger?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes eight zero. All right, moving on to, I'm sorry, somebody else? All right, seven C, a call for a motion to approve the bill list and pay bills for April. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
It's moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, can I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Bowers?
Yes.
Mrs. Dreisbach?
Yes.
Ms. Laho?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Paul?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherlock?
Yes.
And Mr. Jaeger?
Yes.
Motion passes eight zero. We're gonna move on to eight reports. I don't know if the mayor's heat online, but eight A is the mayor's report.
Has the mayor joined? Mr. Mayor, are you on the conference call line? No.
Okay. Eight, eight B is the police chief's report, I don't know if he's online either.
I gave him the dial and info, Chief, Chief, are you with us? Chief McClay?
Yes.
Okay, we're on your monthly report if you would like to.
Okay, this is basically the emergency manager act, we are in the situation we're in. All your emergency services are still operating at 100%. At this point, the county positive test has trumped into 20, which is where the government wants most counties to be, at 20 for a two week period, so we are getting there. Barstow, 19067, has 57 total cases, 25 have recovered, 31 are salacious, and there was one death. I recommend slow opening, such as your tennis courts, your golf carts, leaving your playground as your last thing that really opens, like what's going on with the children these days, because you're gonna have to sanitize, provide, things like that, where the tennis courts and the golf carts may not be that safe supervision. Lastly, we have a emergency service food drive Wednesday, 3pm to 8pm at the firehouse.
Okay, that all, Chief? Okay, back to you, Mr. Parker.
Okay, thank you, Chief McClay. Moving on to HC, our junior councilperson's report.
Did we? Yes. Excuse me, Mr. Parker?
Yes.
I wanted to ask something, I don't know if the chief would answer this or Scott. We had that, that, that short 87-page Pima grant, and I was just wondering what, I'm assuming that some of the figures that the chief has been keeping track of all these weeks will be part of that or not part of that? Like what exactly are we putting in that great request or proposal?
Well, that's the nine M on your agenda.
Right.
You're authorizing us to execute that, the public assistance grant program agreement with Pima. Boilerplate language, you can't change any of it. And I believe the chief has been submitting, are you still there, Chief?
Yes, sir.
I believe he's been submitting weekly reports to Pima, and I think we're in the neighborhood of what, like five or $6,000 in expenses so far?
Correct.
Yeah.
So that, so that, we, we're looking for that reimbursement then, is that how, is that what? Okay, thank you.
Anyone else before we move on? Okay, we're gonna move on to HC, the junior councilperson's report.
You're on, Victoria.
Good evening, everyone. This spring has been one of the dustmints. Families are finding time to find outdoors, schools are closed, and students are learning how to stay on top of their schoolwork digitally. However, the Marshall community is still finding ways to help others. I've started an online web show called Marshall Moments of Joy, abbreviated MMJ, to communicate with Marshall residents and promote positivity throughout the community to the best of my abilities. So far, I have published Marshall Moments of Joy videos, and I've had Representative Terry Warren appear in a video as a discussion guest. My hope is that Marshall Moments of Joy will inspire Marshall residents of all ages to celebrate the things in life that make us happy. Moments of joy can be as small as a morning cup of tea and as large as a fundraising effort to help with COVID-19 relief. I've been uploading videos every Sunday afternoon. However, I am planning to post a 143-day special video this Friday. May 22 is the 143rd day of the year, and as such, it is the second annual 143-day in Pennsylvania, and they have kindness throughout the state to honor Mr. Fred Rogers of the classic color of the show, Mr. Rogers Neighborhood. In honor of 143-day, Pennsylvania is by our act of share active kindness to social media with the hashtag 143day in PA. As part of my 143-day, and if your personal schedule permit, I'm asking the members of council to submit a greeting video of 143-day greeting, which can be as simple as saying, "Happy 143-day." Thank you so much, say happy in the weeks ahead.
Can we get most of that just uploaded to our website? Just some of the details? Is that what, all right, Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Yeah, Victoria, if you email me something that we can post on the Borough website and even if applicable to Borough Facebook page, we'll, we'll spread it around for you.
Okay, that's great, thank you.
Yep.
And if, if and when we submit a, a short message, are we sending it to her email? Or how we, how we send it to her? I didn't hear that.
Okay.
Are there instructions on the MMJ page on how to do a submission?
Yes, so on my Facebook page, Marshall Moments of Joy, I have an email address that I receive submissions.
Okay.
It's mmjsubmit@gmail.com, I will add it to my message, and you can also use my personal email.
Okay.
Okay, you said it's mmjsubmit@gmail.com?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Thank you, Victoria.
Thank you.
I think Mr. Parker is speaking, but we don't have your volume.
Sorry about that, I was going through papers and I didn't want it to. Okay, so nine A is a call for a motion to accept the annual audits as presented by the auditing firm. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
Just like Scott and Micah, the auditor gave a pretty good report with no major findings or really any findings of any kind from like I could see. So congratulations to you guys for having a great audit.
Thanks.
Anyone else? Okay, I'm gonna ask for a roll call for this one.
Mr. Bowers?
And Helen was speaking, but her mic was on, did you have something?
Oh, thanks, Justin. When is the new accounting system going to be live that will get new, new accounting reports?
It's funny you should mention that. We, we are second behind the municipal authority for conversion over to the Edmunds Accounting Package. Their conversion, meaning the MMA's conversion, is contingent upon their successful completion of their meter upgrades, which is scheduled and in the works and in progress. They're supposed to be done by July 1st. This was all pre-COVID-19. So I do not know yet what, if any, delay there will be in the MMA conversion before the Borough can do its conversion. But we're supposed to be right at the tail end, right behind them, so I, I will keep you posted on that, but right now I don't dare hesitate to give you a date.
So probably the fall, like if you were gonna guess?
I'd love it to be the end of the summer, because I'd love to have it done before we get real hot and heavy into budget season.
Okay, anyone else? Roll call, Virginia?
Sure. Mr. Bowers?
Yes.
Mrs. Dreisbach?
Yes.
Ms. Laho?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Paul?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherlock?
Yes.
And Mr. Jaeger?
Yes.
Motion passes eight zero. Nine B is a call for a motion to reappoint Barbie Kane Thornton and Company as Borough Auditor for a three-year term, which is 2020 to 2022, at the fees established in the engagement letter. Can I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
I'm gonna be quiet, Justin.
I'm just trying to keep it moving.
Thanks.
All right, we have a motion and a second, any discussion?
Scott or Mr. Sawyer, maybe you could comment, what is the, I'm gonna say price increase over this year?
It's about 400 bucks, it's $10,000 for, well, I'm talking about the Borough Audit now. It's $10,000 for 2020, $1,450 for 2021, $1,900 for 2022. The library audit is going to be 2,600 for 2020, 2,750 for 2021, and 2,900 for 2022. Very reasonable, in my view.
Yes, very.
I think like, and Scott, as you said, I believe it's up 400 for the first year, 450 on the Borough side for the next two, and 100 on the library increase, and then 150 for the next two years after that.
Anyone else? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extension? All right, motion carries eight zero. Nine C is a call for a motion to adopt a resolution authorizing the Borough Engineer to submit a grant application in the amount of $250,000 to the DCED Greenway Trails and Recreation Program for the Phase One Construction of Patriots Park and to authorize the Borough Manager to execute the necessary documents.
So moved. So moved.
Second. I'll have to go to the audio tape for that, but we have a, a motion and a second discussion.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Actually, there's two questions. One, it said the, the cost is $750,000, the expected cost. And this is, I'm just wondering where the other 500 is coming from? Now, I think we might have a little bit already in the pocket somewhere, but I, I just find it difficult to vote on something when we don't have any guaranteed funds.
Well, we don't have any guaranteed funds, that's for sure. But remember, on this same project, we also have a, a CDBG grant application pending at the county.
For?
I'm not sure, I remember off the top of my head the dollar amount, it was, it was the one we approved a couple of meetings ago.
Yeah.
I guess it was February or March.
I forget what that was. Okay, do you know how much this actual grant will cost us to submit?
I, Alora, are you with us?
Yes, I'm here.
Oh, good, I can throw you under the bus. Refresh my memory on the application cost for the Phase One Construction of Patriots Park, wasn't it like $4,000?
Yeah, typically around like four to $5,000.
Okay.
Okay.
So what is the match on, so nine C and nine D, what is the match that the Borough has to put up for the getting?
Our plant?
So we're, we're trying not to have the Borough match, but CDBG to match. So.
We're stacking them.
Yeah.
Count the county to see if they can write a letter stating that, you know, if they award the CDBG project, that they would match this grant, so that the Borough won't have to say anything.
Our goal, our goal always is to use other people's money.
Of course.
So, so if this, so if something doesn't come in, we could actually turn the grant away if we needed to, right?
Or we could try to leverage another one in its place.
Yeah.
Parker, I have a quick question for these guys.
He gives like a three-year contract, so, you know, CDBG is only a year, so if we get CD this year and then, you know, we don't get CD right away, we try again next year, and hopefully, you know, we get it so that we have all the funding then.
Mr. Parker, I think Mr. Jaeger may have been signaling.
Yes, I was just, I was just gonna, yeah.
Thank you. So, Alora, Scott, I have a question for you guys, and it's kind of a, kind of a gut check here. With all the money flying around from the pandemic relief and everything else, what is the likelihood that these grants are gonna be either put completely aside for a little while, or just not even considered this year?
We don't know.
Okay.
The fair answer that I can give you is, we just don't know.
Yeah, I don't think anybody really does yet, but I, that, that would be my main concern, that we're, we're gonna jump into something that has a very low likelihood of being approved because the money's just not there. But, um, okay.
The, the good news is that if that should become the eventuality, we will have that application package together and on the shelf, ready to recycle in the next round. So it's not like it's entirely wasted, I mean, we've done that in prior years.
Yep, and it's worked.
I have another question. Somebody else, I'm sorry. Ted?
No.
Okay. This is, I think, because it, I don't have it up on the screen, this is Phase One, is that correct?
This is Phase One of construction, yes.
Of construction. And then, now, I was looking on the bill list, the bill list reflects a, a Phase Two cost from Gilmore, so maybe we could get the answer. It, was that a mistake or are there costs coming up for Phase Two? It actually, that's, one of the, one of the invoices says Phase Two.
That was probably the, the wrapping up of the Phase Two of the Accessibility Project, because that was also in two phases. And that's the one that just finished, where we finished the curb sidewalks and stormwater inlets around the picture frame of the block around, around Patriots Park. If you saw something that said Phase Two, that would have been it. Because we're nowhere near talking about Phase Two construction yet.
I didn't think so. Okay, I'm sorry, I'm, go ahead, I'm, I'm just gonna look at something, that's all right.
I have a question regarding this as well.
Go ahead.
Since it says Phase One Construction, it's been quite some time before Gilmore came in and presented their concept plan. Is there any timeline for when they're gonna come in with a final plan and provide it for council and for the public to see?
Yes, there is. In fact, Alora and I were just talking about this very issue two weeks ago, I believe, because that concept plan has had some minor tweaks to it based on feedback from all of you, based on community feedback, based on feedback from Historic Summer Seat, and the fact that we have, Alora, you can clean this up for me if you want, but I think we originally didn't have this in, in two construction phases and potentially three, but we're structuring it that way now. When, when do you think we might have a revised concept plan?
Oh, I mean, I have the full version of the concept plan that's been kind of revised for some of our, you know. um, for some of our, you know, discussions and meetings, uh, like the parking lot being restructured to be the same footprint and that kind of thing. Um, so if needed, I mean, I could, I could always forward that to you.
Yeah, can you send, i- i- is it done?
Um, yeah, because we were kind of working on something for like a, a sign.
Oh, okay, yeah. I, I thought you, I thought you guys were still working on the revised concept plan. Well, if you can send that to me electronically, um, we could probably put that on public portal, and if you could, uh, maybe print that out for me on, on big paper, we will update the one that's, uh, I put it on poster board, we'll update it to the one that's in the, uh, the front of council chambers, and we'll share it with, uh, council, if we ever get to see them again, face to face. Oh, we'll share. Although it is, there's a lot of elbow room up here tonight, I gotta tell you. So if you could send that to me, we'll, we'll, we'll share it.
Okay, yeah, it's the full version. Um, we don't have like Phase One, Two, Three, whatever it is broken out on it, so it's just like the full ultimate, you know, part.
Okay.
What kind of whole day.
So we'll just have to explain that part of it, that it's going to be over two, likely three phases.
Yeah.
Okay.
And one more question, um, since I've never built a public park before, I assume ultimately those plans will come before council to vote on and approve?
Well, what she's talking about is a concept plan. What you're talking about is engineering plans. There's a difference. Um...
Well, I would think we would need to approve a concept before we move into.
Of course. Yeah. So once I get it, we will...
Disperse?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, I found that page I was looking for, and I can go over with Scott another time, offline, not this evening, but it does say accessibility improvements.
Yes, that, that's related to what, uh...
To the ramps and stuff like that thing?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Actually, it's not completely finished. Uh, I think there's still some punch list items and, uh, did they do the seating yet? Uh, Alora?
They had to, uh, come back out most likely. Uh, we haven't really been getting as much rain, so they're mostly gonna have to come back to reseat at that.
Okay. Yeah, there, there's...
Parts of it look really good.
Yeah, there's still some minor things left to be finished there, but for the most part, it's finished.
Uh, if I can comment on the lower level, if we could make it not Dog Park Two, I think it would look much better. But there are more dogs down there on the lower level than, uh, than kids. But, so that, that's what the neighborhood calls it, Dog Park Two.
Yeah.
What is?
Popular spot for canines.
What is Dog Park?
Level, the lower level of the, uh, of Patriots Park, you know, which was the...
Playground all fields?
Those fields, yeah. So because it's, uh, fenced in, that's where most people will take their dogs. Like, the upper level looks great. It's all green and, um, you know, but it's open, so.
Maybe the fence should come down.
I was just thinking the same thing.
Yep.
Yeah, there's a, there's an old chain link fence there that's not in very good condition.
Some of the neighborhood boys are managing to get it down themselves. And I think Scott knows about that.
Yeah, I, I've noticed one end of it is like collapsed.
Okay. Oh, so Scott, um, various neighborhoods, I guess people are walking their dogs more, um, uh, they are, um, residents are not picking up after their animals? So on some streets, uh, can the borough get, like, pick up after your dog signs, or is that the residents' problems, or? Um, like, what can, is there something we can do? Can we ask the police officers to ask people, do you have doggy bags as they ride by? You know, I, I, I don't know. I'm just throwing things out there.
Well, it's, to answer your question, it's kind of all of the above. There is an ordinance, uh, about curbing your dog, which people are always asking, what does that mean, curb your dog? Um, do you, they are required to clean up after their dog. We can post signs in parks and stuff. I don't know if you wanna get into that on every single residential street. Um, and yes, the, the police can cite them if they observe, um, that happening, but, um, they almost would have to witness it in order to, to issue a citation for it, which is probably unlikely. I don't know if the chief is still on. Chief, are you with us? Oh, he, he must have dropped off.
Could we at least, I'm sorry, I'm sorry to interrupt you. Could we at least at a minimum, maybe, uh, put something on the, on the, the website, the television and Facebook?
Well, it's on television already. I know that.
Actually, it, it's on, yeah, it's actually on all of our platforms already. Oh, chief, are you there?
Down there.
Okay, chief, did you wanna, uh, chime in on this, uh, curb your dog, clean up after your dog issue, or?
You're right. It's a summer defense, has to be a witness of a police law enforcement, or a plaintiff that was willing to come to court for it.
Oh.
Yeah.
So, so, one, one of the residents...
You have a surveillance of your house, if you have a video of someone letting their dog poop on your yard and they walk away without...
They still have to come to court. Okay. Private citizens still have to come to court and testify to it.
I, I didn't, I didn't hear what they said.
Uh, the chief was answering councilman, uh, that, that had the question about whether the, uh, complainant would still have to come to court and appear in person uh, as part of the prosecution, and chief said yes.
In fact, uh, also, I believe our ordinance says that you have to have a bag visible.
If it's a video, if you have a video surveillance of it.
Yeah, wha- whether you're an actual, eye-to-eye witness, or whether you have home video surveillance showing it, uh, that, that's what Councilman Robinson was asking the chief, and the chief said yes. In either scenario, you would have to, uh, appear in court.
Well, I have a question.
Can you answer? I'm sorry.
Oh, um, the two streets, or three major streets in the manner that people have been telling me about, I'm sure there's more, um, is Riverside, uh, Post Road, and Ohio Avenue, because, um, they kind of are streets where there's no houses on the other side, so people tend to, uh, walk their dogs, and then it just, they poop on the resident's side for some reason, not the wood side. So they've been, the residents have been asking me, like, what can be done? So one of the residents actually told me that they thought that there was a law that, um, that, that police officers could actually ask people when they see them walking their dogs, like, do you have a poop bag? And if they don't have a poop bag, then it could be cited, but I never heard of that before.
I, I, I don't know if that's the case or not. Chief, do you know whether...
If you don't break, if you don't break the law, it's not staying up there for your animal. Tough to prosecute that, just because beforehand...
Yeah.
Don't have the proper equipment.
Yeah, and, and I'm sorry, you said Riverside Post, and what was the third one?
Ohio.
Ohio. Okay. Okay.
There's also people walking their dog in the cemetery that I have seen don't pick up, but the cemetery has signs saying, pick up after yourself, so I don't know what to do about that.
Uh, s- signs only do so much good, unfortunately.
Cemetery is private property, and just, you know, the dog park runs into it all the time. I mean, it doesn't matter if there's people there, there's people that their dogs run free, poop, and then right in front of people, just leave it there and don't do a thing about it.
Inconsiderate.
Right?
Very.
Okay.
So, back to you, Mr. Parker. I don't know if we're done with nine C or, or not. Did we, uh?
We didn't vote.
Yeah, we still need...
We didn't vote yet.
We went off on one heck of a tangent.
Yes, we did. All right, uh, let's do a roll call for this one. Virginia?
Mr. Bowers?
Yes.
Mrs. Drysbach?
Yes.
Mr. LaHole?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Paul?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherlock?
Yes.
And Mr. Jaeger?
Yes.
Okay. Motion passes eight zero. Uh, nine D, call for a motion to adopt a resolution authorizing the borough engineer to submit a grant application in the amount of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to D C E D's Greenway, Greenways Trails and Recreation Program for the Manor Park Playground Improvements, and to authorize the borough manager to execute the necessary documents.
So moved.
Have a second? Do we have a motion?
Do you have a second? Do you need one?
I thought I heard somebody say second.
I gave a second.
Okay, so Mr. Jaeger, okay. Miss Drysbach and Mr. Jaeger, uh, any discussion?
Well, I have the same questions I had with the last one, so I guess the answers are the same. Um, again, this project is six hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollars, with only, you know, um, and, uh, I know we stack them, but that's a lot of stacking. So, I guess we'll see what happens.
Th- th- this one too, just so you know, was one of the other CDBG applications that you did a couple of months ago.
Correct.
Anyone else? Number roll call, please.
Mr. Bowers?
Yes.
Mrs. Drysbach?
Yes.
Mr. LaHole?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Paul?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherlock?
Yes.
And Mr. Jaeger?
Yes.
Okay. Motion passes eight zero. We're gonna move on to nine E, call for a motion to approve payment in the amount of one hundred and ten thousand dollars to the Marsville Fire Company per the twenty twenty fire fund budget contingent upon receipt of their twenty nineteen financial statement and audit. Can I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Second.
That's another, go to the audio tape. Uh, all right, we have a motion and a second discussion.
Uh, if I may, Scott, have we received those, uh, financials yet?
Uh, we have. We received a copy of their current budget, and I believe that was shared.
Yes.
And we received something, I believe, just today, uh, pertaining to their twenty nineteen financials. So you have not seen that, but yes.
Okay. Good.
Okay, anyone else? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Extension? Motion passes eight zero. Nine E, uh, call for a motion to approve the payment in the amount of sixty thousand dollars through Capital Health EMS per the twenty twenty EMS fund budget contingent upon receipt of their twenty nineteen financial statement and audit. Can I have a motion in a second?
Clarification, you said E, you mean F? C D E F?
Did I say E? Yes, it's nine F, sorry.
Okay.
So moved.
Second. We have a motion and a second discussion. Scott, I guess...
Scott, same question?
Yeah.
Uh, same question, same answer, except for, uh, Capital Health usually posts their audits on their website, and I don't think they're on there yet, but I think everybody's been delayed, you know, because of the COVID thing. So we, we will certainly, uh, make sure those are available before we release the payments.
Okay. Thank you. Okay.
Ted?
Yes.
I noticed that we also got their, um, their monthly reports of their service provided. We used to get them all the time. I hadn't seen them in a while, so that's, uh, it was nice. It's nice to know.
Uh, the EMS report, yeah, we get them quarterly.
Yeah.
Okay.
They're actually very busy, um...
Yeah. Yeah.
Scott, when is our agreement up with them?
Uh, you gotta bring that up, right? Uh, I think we, I think it's up the end of next year, I believe, September.
Okay. We've had any problems, any, uh, complaints?
No, everybody's been very satisfied, uh, with, um, I, I've heard no complaints from any of the surrounding, uh, EMS providers, no complaints from the county. I frequently asked the fire marshal, uh, excuse me, the fire chief, uh, how he's coordinating with them, and uh, so far, I've had no negative reviews.
Okay, I've had a discussion with, with the fire chief, uh, a while back about them, and he, you know, he was, said they were very professional and, um, yeah, and no complaints whatsoever, so that's good to hear. All right, anyone else?
Are they interested in staying on? I would imagine, yes.
I would think so. I hope so.
Okay. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Extension? Motion carries eight zero. Nine G, call for a motion to approve the Labor Day picnic to be held in Williamson Park on Monday, September se- seventh, two thousand and twenty, with a rain date of Saturday, November twelfth, twenty twenty. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
I'll second it. Any discussion?
I have a question. Um, I seem to remember a letter coming around that, um, the mayor wanted the recreation board to do the picnic. Is he planning on doing it?
Yeah, in that letter, he said that he was not running it.
Yeah, he did.
Yeah.
So who's going to be running the picnic?
Well, I, I don't have the, the mayor's, uh, correspondence in front of me, but I thought his...
The letter, Scott, the letter, the letter said that he was, that he didn't want to do it in twenty twenty, that he was interested in doing it in twenty twenty-one, and he threw it out there that if the recreation, um, board or recreation committee was interested in taking it over this year, they could. I would suggest that we table this the next month until we find out if the recreation board wants to do it. Because I know the recreation board also did that, um, event last year that was, that was really nice with the music in October, and if they're gonna do the music again this year, that might be a lot on their plate to do, do events like that in two months. So I would, I would suggest tableing it till next month and find out what the, if the rec board would be interested in doing it this year.
I doubt they will be. Um, as far as I know, they haven't had any plans of doing anything this year, um, so I doubt they'll have the picnic scheduled by September. We haven't even had a meeting.
Well, I...
I, I have a...
Go ahead.
A quick question. Um, who put in the request for the dates?
I believe we assigned the date because that's the date it always falls on.
Okay. Got it, got it.
And, and the, and the rain date always followed, yeah.
Okay, all right.
If you're waiting...
That's fine, thanks.
Next month, that's fine. I'll, I'll reach out to the rec board and see what their recommendations are, or see what they wanna do.
Not, not to be a party pooper or anything, but it might be a little late in the year to be able to pull off...
Anything. Really.
On that short of notice.
I know.
Uh, and, and with the COVID nineteen thing still, uh, upon us, uh, yeah, the point was raised that it might not be wise this year anyway, so I don't know if you wanna...
Just table it.
Councilman Robinson made the suggestion to postpone it the next month, and maybe we think about it, maybe we consider canceling it, maybe we get a hit start on next year, I don't know.
I, I was gonna, I was gonna take back my motion and just...
I was just gonna ask that.
Rather, rather than table it, because we don't really know.
Yeah.
And, um...
Can I make a comment?
I mean, I put it on so we could have discussion, but I don't, I don't think it's, uh, it might not even be healthy, let alone financially.
All right.
We have a second. Um, if we were to go ahead and prove this, and it just never happened, that would be fine, but why don't we just vote on it now? If we approve it and it goes nowhere, that's fine, but if, you know, the rec board, at least somebody can reach out to them tomorrow and see if they're interested, and then we don't have to wait another month and, and have that if they should decide to do something. Maybe they'll come up with an alternative social distancing activity in stores.
Zoom Labor Day, yeah, okay.
Well, there was some discussion of them doing...
That's, that's okay.
There was some discussion, guys, there was some discussion of them doing a, a drive-in night at the park where, where they took, took over the, um, uh, the parking lot and set up a, a screen in the parking lot so people could drive up and, and sit in the parking lot in their cars, which may not be a horrible idea, but I don't know if that's gonna take off or not.
Yeah.
I, I, I actually... I, I, I actually kinda like the idea of just going ahead and, and voting on it. Um, and, you know, I mean, like Mr. Bowers said, if it doesn't happen, or if nobody's decided to take it on in whatever form, I actually like the idea of, of a, uh, you know, maybe something like a drive-in movie thing or so- something on the day, just to give the town something to, to come together as closely as possible.
Okay, I reneg on my reneg. I'm back again.
All right, so I, 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 I'm okay with it, if everybody else is okay with it, just to vote for it, just so that we secure the date.
Okay.
And, you know, if, if somebody decides they want to, to try to, try to do it, at least, you know, they have dates and a rain date and everything all set, so. Is that all right with everybody?
Yes.
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 Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extensions? All right. Motion carries eight, go ahead.
If I can comment, uh, uh, what Mike said, uh, we had a, we had the, um, showed movies down there before, and it's very popular for people to pull their cars up. We just, we showed it on the side of the, the old ca- canteen.
I mean, there's even the possibility of, of, you know, even, even if we were to get, you know, have music at, you know, on a, on a portable stage or something, and people could stay in their cars, or, or, you know, do like they did in Domino Park in New York, you know, make designated spaces for people to, to stay within and stuff like that, so I mean, there's a lot of ideas and so. Anyway, okay.
Who had the idea, who had the idea about the drive-in?
Uh, Mike, Mr. Jaeger.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it wasn't, honestly, it wasn't my idea, it was, uh, Noel, um, Sperry reached out to me, asked me what I thought about it, so I can't take credit for that.
Fine, thank you, Mr. Noel.
You should have him reach out to, um, Joe Marlowe, because Joe Marlowe does that kind of projection, um, screen thing, he has big screens.
I'll let him know.
Okay, thank you, everyone. All right. I kinda lost where we were, uh. Nine H. Call for a motion authorizing the administration to issue bid specifications, soliciting proposals for trash collection. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Oh, second.
Have a motion and a second discussion?
Uh, I do. I'm sorry. I sent something to Scott, I guess you got it, Scott and Ted?
Yes. Yeah.
Uh, was there any, any thought on a couple of those items that I mentioned, or?
Yeah, we, we've gotten, uh, some feedback from a couple of council members that we will, uh, effort to integrate into the final specifications, and also I think the Solicitor's Office is waiting for me to fill in some of the blanks and gaps in terms of the dates, uh, and the specifications that we showed you. What we showed you was simply a draft.
Okay. Okay.
We cleaned up, we cleaned up, oh, to answer you, Councilwoman, we cleaned up the dates, we cleaned up, um, some of the grammar, we cleaned up, uh, it's, we already submitted a, a new proposal over to the manager, but I'm, we're waiting for the information from the borough so that we can, because we're gonna bid it in many different ways.
Right.
So that you guys will then have the pop, because it's really a policy decision that only council can make as to if you want two days a week, you want one day a week, you want trash cans, you don't want their cans, you know, there's, you want it Monday to Friday, do you want it Monday to Saturday, do you want, you know, those sorts of things, you want it, you know, all the, all the things that all the municipalities have wrestled with over the, uh, last number of years. So, yeah, you're gonna have, they're gonna be, it's gonna be bid multiple ways. Uh, as soon as we hear from Scott, we will then do another draft, submit it to him, and then submit it back to council, and everybody can look at it, and then comment as to, um, what, what's, you know, what they think.
So we're voting on the preliminary draft, is that what you're saying?
No, you're, you're, you're voting, you're voting tonight to authorize the administration to issue bid specifications, soliciting proposals. This way, we're not waiting until your June meeting.
Here's the thing, the contract doesn't expire till the end of the year, we wanted to get a jump on it, we want to have plenty of time, because what if, I mean, what if, God forbid.
It comes back.
You hate, you hate what comes back, and, and we have to rebid it again, we wanted plenty of time. Uh, we've, we've, we're on the second draft, as soon as we hear from Scott and some of the other comments, we'll be on the third draft, and we'll, and we'll get this thing whipped into shape in a hurry.
Okay. I, I'm all for getting it started, you know, tomorrow, yesterday.
No, no, we've been on.
No.
We've been on it.
If we'll, if we'll see those changes, like how, we can't, we can't send it out to them until it's complete, I guess is what I'm trying to say, that's all.
We agree. Agreed.
Two of the suggestions were last year, or not year, previous years, um, the hauler always provided the borough one free dumpster pickup.
Correct.
Be, as, as I mentioned, and that was usually for, uh, debris that no, we could never find the owner, so our, our public works have, would have to pick it up, we could get rid of it, so that was one.
That's pretty common, yeah, that's, 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 I agree.
I asked.
Agreed, all that, all that will be incorporated, I promise you, all that will be incorporated into the.
Okay. Thank you so much.
And we, and by the way, I want to thank everyone for all of their comments, because ten brains are better than, you know, we've, we've, we've been using Middletown, Bristol's, our previous ones, and a number of other municipalities, and it's, uh, it's kind of like scrambling eggs, we want to get the best omblet possible out of this, so thank you for your help. And your feedback.
I do have one important question about it, it was in section 1.23, how we, it, it talked about the bidders' uh, requests for exclusion or changes, and we were giving them time to be able to, you know, request those things, but I didn't understand how we were doing that, like, how do you, you know, it, uh, the bid spec is a bid spec, I mean, they can't come in and say, well, can I do it this way instead? So I was just wondering how we were, how that's handled.
Well, there's a provision in the specifications that allow for potential bidders to ask questions. There's also a, uh, not mandatory, but a pre-bid meeting that they can attend to ask questions. And if it makes sense for us to make a change, we will issue an amendment to the bid specifications.
Okay, and I noticed that amendment will be on, uh, it'll be online. Should we, should we, uh, is that the only form of communication we're gonna make those amendments to? I just don't want to be caught where someone said, well, you know, I was putting in a bid, and we thought we were here, and you didn't send me something.
Well, no, usually.
I just don't want to be challenged.
Yeah, usually what happens in these situations is whoever attended the pre-bid meeting, or whoever picked up a bid packet, of course, we don't know who downloaded it directly from the website, uh, we will send everyone, uh, a copy of the amendment to the specifications, so that they're aware.
Thank you, yeah, it, it, it's not how it was presented, so I wasn't sure. Thank you so much.
Yep.
Scott and Randy, I just want to say thank you, I read through all forty of those gorgeous pages. As you know from being around the last two and a half.
By the way, I want, I want you to know that I had a really good night's sleep one night, I was reading, and I was on page twenty-three, next thing I know, it's the morning, so they're really very good, okay?
But as you guys are well aware, in the last two and a half years, one of our biggest complaints every single week is trash.
Yeah.
And I'm gonna be a realist, we're never gonna get rid of that probably as our biggest complaint, but hopefully this contract and what you've put together helps, there's a, there's a menu of options for the borough to consider. Um, there, to me, seems to be a lot more teeth in it, so that we can go back at the contractor, um, and hit their pocket to get them to correct things. And that's usually what talks.
We will do our best, but I just want to say, because we have the privilege of representing a lot of municipalities, it's a problem, um, it's, it's just a general problem with the carriers, with the, with the turnover they have, with their, with their labor issues and what have you, but we want the contract to be so that if we have to step in, if they, if they bear, they bear the financial cost of that, so that, uh, we have the option of doing that and subtracting from what they owe us, so yeah, thank you.
I do like the clause in there that if they, uh, break one thing, it is considered a breach of contract, and we can, uh, get out of the contract with them and go elsewhere. Hopefully it doesn't come down to that, but I think that's some good language.
I think that's after three times though, isn't it, Justin? Don't they get three tries? Unless I'm not talking about the same section. But I, I only wish that we could have something, uh, for the residents to be respectful about the trash they put out. I don't know about any of you, but if you see some of the way some people put their trash out, or don't put it out, or lay it on the ground, uh, I, I just, it's, it's almost more disturbing to me than how it gets picked up. Um, I've sent pictures to Scott where, a couple times, where they're, they just, there's not even a trash can, they just like throw it, so, anyway.
In Bristol, in Bristol Township, they had that same issue, and then they got the ninety-five gallon dumpsters on the wheels. Remember, remember, you remember Helen Sinis, she should rest in peace?
Yeah.
Sweet Helen.
Uh, that's, um, I'm on one voice, but I'm, I'm really in favor of the ninety-five.
I'm just telling you though, but that's solved, I'm just, if you're asking a question, I, I'm just gonna give you from experience, that's solved a lot of the problems, because it had this gigantic, uh, wheeled cat, you know, canister and, or container, trash can, um, I mean, I have it right here at this house, I love it, I love, I mean, we invented the wheel, I don't know, you know, the wheels are a pretty old invention, and for goodness gracious sakes, my whole childhood was dragging those metal trashcans down my father's driveway in Levittown, and, uh, you know, so, I'm just telling you, that's a possibility.
You're, you're better for it, Randy, don't worry about it, you're okay.
I know, I know, built muscle.
Randy, what, what happens, every resident gets a, a trashcan, and that's the only place the trash can go?
No, no, if you run out, if it's, if it's, the way it works is, they're very large, the ninety-five gallon trashcans, unless you're having a major party, that will hold a lot of trash, and there's also recycling. And you can put extra out if you want as well, like, for example, if it's not enough, you put out more plastic bags, or they put out cardboard boxes, or they, you know, they can, they can have more than that. But it, it, at least it's very neat, um, it's neater than it was prior. But the reason we're gonna bid it, or our, our proposal is to bid it in several different ways, is to give you, the council, options. It is strictly a policy decision that you make, it is not a legal, the, the legal wording in the document is our problem, but the policy is, is, is totally yours to make.
Okay. Thanks for that clarification, because my understanding was, if it's not in the trashcan, they don't pick it up, because that has happened too, so, um.
I, 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 I'm just gonna say that when you have large municipalities like Morrisville, and Bristol, and Falls, and Middletown, and there's thousands of cans that are picking up every day, there's always gonna be, you know, will be some worker who doesn't feel good, or is whatever, whatever, it happens, like, you know, it's not gonna be perfect, no matter who, you know, I mean, I've seen them all, some of our, our contracts are with all of them, if you go to all the municipalities, you can always tell they have different colored trashcans, and you can tell which of the haulers are, are hauling in that, in that community, so, um, it's been my experience here, that whatever I put out is taken, regardless of how much more, I mean, we've had some big parties here, and, over the years, and like, that trashcan was not enough, and I just had plastic bags lined up, you know, all rounded on it, and they took everything, so. We will try to, we will try to word the contract to care for all those issues, how's that, fair enough?
On that note, Randy, I, I think there was something in the contract too, that if for some reason they don't pick up your garbage, if you put uh, toxic waste out there, or an old TV, they're supposed to have pre-printed la- pre-printed papers, uh, or labels to put on it to tell the people exactly why it wasn't taken, or that that object isn't taken by the trash.
Yep.
That's good.
All right, anyone else? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Extension? Motion passes eight zero. Nine L. Call for a motion authorizing the Borough Engineer to solicit bids.
I think it's I. Aye. It's, looks like an L.
Yeah, it looks like an L with a dot. All right, sorry, uh, nine L, nine I. Call for a motion authorizing the Borough Engineer to solicit bids for installation of ADA curb ramps at certain locations, subject to availability of grant funds. Can I have a motion?
So moved, so moved.
I'll second it.
Of course I have a question, right, because you guys wanted to get off and be done. My question is, back in March, we did mention some of the locations, we mentioned Washington, Melvin, Grandview, and then the sidewalk on West Trenton Avenue, and, uh, I believe. And I'm just wondering, this is kind of a vague, and I realize it has to do with funds, but it's, it's a very vague, it's vague. Motion is vague, so should we, do we need to, uh, be specific about what's in there, even if it's just for historic purposes?
I don't really think we need to specifically identify the intersections at this time, but you are correct, I believe when Alora was here from the engineer's office a couple of months back, she had a list started, Alora, are you still on the phone?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay. I, I know there's what, ten or eleven, it's, it's roads that we've recently paved, and roads we have targeted in the near term, correct?
Yeah, we've, um, indicated eleven per ramp, and, uh, you know, we'll bid it in a way that there's alternate bids, so if prices go above, that we can do an alternate bid, so that we stay within the grant amount.
Yeah, un- unfortunately, this is having to be coordinated without us having a budget for it, uh, because it's contingent entirely on the availability of grant funds, some we already have in our pocket, which was the funding we got from the state late last year, and some that we've applied for, so this is gonna be, this also is an issue that isn't going away anytime soon, this is gonna be a roving program, project, that goes on and on and on, for at least as long as we're doing road paving, um.
Was that the hundred and fifty thousand dollars that was in the mo- the mobile, uh, what's it called, the mobile grant, um?
We asked for a hundred and fifty, but we got a hundred.
Okay.
Okay, anyone else? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Extensions? Motion passes eight zero.
This might be a record tonight. All these eight zero, eight zero votes.
You just jinxed it. All right, nine J, call for a motion authorizing the Borough Engineer to solicit proposals to repave the front parking lot of the municipal building. Can I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
You have a motion and a second discussion?
I have a, I have a question, so, um, I, I don't know how the year is going to end, but is this something that can be put off till next year, Scott, or does the, that parking lot need to be?
We can put it off, we've actually, uh, been putting it off, because we wanted to do it last year when we were paving Union Street. Naturally, it made sense to do the parking lot since it's connected to Union Street, uh, but we weren't able to do it because we had, uh, another portion of it, uh, excavated due to a water leak. But yes, we can put this off if council doesn't want us to do it this year.
What, what is your recommendation?
I just want to know where the money's coming from.
Well, the money would come from the street fund.
Okay.
But I would, I would suggest, why don't we look at the bids?
I was just gonna say.
Or proposals, because this is one of those that it might come in, we're not sure where, but right near the bid threshold. If we have to go through formal bidding to do this, I might be the first to echo, let's put this off and do it next year. If it's below the bid threshold, and we can do it just with proposals, um.
Well, oil's cheap, maybe we'll get a good bid. Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Plus, there, there might be a hunger out there for some work, uh, you know.
Exactly.
With things getting going, so people might sharpen their pencils, but it's a very small project. So, uh, my, my suggestion would be if there, even if there's hesitation among you, why don't we wait and see what the cost proposals are, and we can decide then whether we want to do it or not.
Okay, so, I mean, we're just soliciting proposals at this point.
Correct.
Okay.
And have, have we fixed the leak? That was, that's the big dip, right?
We have fixed the leak, and we are, I've been assured that it's the last leak to be fixed in the front parking lot. So you, you've probably noticed when you've been in the front parking lot, there's a couple of sections that have been dug up and patched over the years, and yeah. It looks like hopscotch.
I just wanted to make a comment, uh, after I saw this on the agenda last week, I took a drive-through of the driveway there to take a look at it, and since you had mentioned right before this, I, I'm gonna jinx it, because I'm a hard, I'm gonna be a hard no on this. We have roads that are in much worse shape than this parking lot is, and I think they should be paved first before we even consider this.
We had to break the streak, didn't we?
Uh, that's, I, I, I appreciate your input, Justin, but I also feel that since it's a borough property, uh, our liability might be a little bit, um, something we should be ta- paying attention to.
Anyway, I'll, I'll jump in, I'll chime in real quick.
Anyway, I'll, I'll jump in. I'll chime in real quick too and say that based on the, the concept of what the cost should be, it shouldn't be anywhere near the cost of paving a road. So although I agree with you and we have bigger fish to fry, I don't think that this is a drop in the bucket for getting an entire road done. We'll find out.
That's what I was gonna say. I mean, it's basically just, you know, they're gonna solicit proposals. I mean, uh, we're not going to, uh, we're not gonna do it until we, we have an idea of what the cost is gonna be. So.
Yeah, we're, we're guessing that this is gonna be, Alora, feel free to correct me if you disagree, but we're thinking 15 to 20,000 range. And as I believe it was Councilman Jaeger alluded, it's 200 grand, uh, you know, pave a road. So.
I, I'm shocked. I didn't even think it would be quite that high, but what's the threshold? 18,000, isn't it?
Funny because Justin and I had a conversation and that's right where we were. That's funny.
Yeah.
Uh, Scott, can I ask for a, a, a change in your proposal, then an alternative proposal? Um, when, when?
I'm always up for negotiation.
Get a, a pricing on paving the whole thing and also just pricing on, on milling out the, the bad areas and paving them. Because the pavement itself isn't in bad condition everywhere else, relatively speaking, everything else in the borough. I mean, it's got some life left.
Mill it.
What I saw.
Yeah, but it's so small. I mean, it's not something I wanna have to come back to and deal with again. Um. Yeah, we, we were just gonna have them mill it, pave it, re-stripe it, be done with it.
Have, have we, uh, has, um, Gilmore weighed in on this and already done some measuring and costs, uh?
Yes. Uh, the borough engineer's office has, uh, uh, me, has measurements and, uh, specifications on all of our parking lots, this one included. But we have not gotten, uh, formal cost estimates yet.
Okay.
That's what the motion's asking for, really.
Yeah.
All right. Anyone else? Go ahead, Nancy.
I was just gonna say, again, this might be just like the other ones. If it comes up too high, we just don't do it. But then, you know, then you're just, you're still eating the cost of the, uh, of the, the engineers, but.
Right. But remember, it's not quite as expensive as having to formally bid because we think it's gonna need to come in less. If, if something surprises us and it comes in high, you're right. We're, this is gonna go on the list for next year.
Okay.
I was gonna say, just, just remember the street paving came in, uh, at a very reasonable rate. I mean, it came in at, at what we had available. So fingers crossed. All right. Anyone else? All right. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
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 No opposed? Okay. Tensions? All right. Motion carries eight zero. Uh, nine K. Call for a motion to adopt the resolution to delay the penalty accrual. Sorry. Uh, deadline for municipal real estate tax for the year 2020 to July 31st, 2020. Can I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion?
This is a county initiative, right? Or state?
Uh, well, kind of a county. The county was doing it themselves and, um, they, you know, shared what they were doing with all of the municipalities and most are going in this direction.
Anyone else? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Tensions? Motion carries eight zero. Nine L. Call for a motion to hire Lou Halas as a part-time police officer. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second discussion?
Um, like going forward, um, I, I would like to get a little more information, um, provided with these kinds of requests. We just hired a part-time officer in March and there are costs associated with these part-time officers. And the memo we got was just, um, basically saying, we're going into summer, having an additional officer will be needed because of our full-time officers have taken very few vacation days off and have a tremendous amount of earned time to use. Um, I don't mind hiring a part-time officer, but I'd like to see some data that goes along with that going forward. Um, you know, like what is the police schedule with all the part-timers that we currently have? What would the deficit be if they were all working? What officer is not working? That's just my recommendation, but I don't really have a problem approving this, but I'd like to see more data.
Okay. Just so you're, uh, aware, if I could just bring it to council's attention, you, council had previously authorized, uh, up to 10 part-time positions for the police department. Uh, there are seven at present, so this would be number eight.
Is that, is that before we hire the full-timer?
No, I'm, I'm speaking strictly of part-time police officers. Council authorized, approved up to 10 part-time police officer positions. Seven are currently filled. And the hiring of this part-timer will bring the total to eight. So just so you know, technically the, the chief has two more that, you know, if he can find people, um, he, he can bring them to you for approval as well.
Oh, okay.
Uh, uh, Chief, are you still on? Do you wanna comment on this or?
Yeah, we were, you said before, Scott, that part-time guys are bold and we have a lot. My guys are not taking off to the fall wire. And, um, I have some guys that have honor arid vacation plus their pay time that I'd like to be able to grant them when the time comes around with summer. Um, they have been very valuable. They've been very good throughout the fall wire. You wanna be able to get the guys off when they have work. So that's what part-timers need to have.
Ted?
Yes?
Uh, it's, it's my understanding also that there's been some difficulty, uh, with the 30-hour rule that you've now, like instead of, you know, four guys doing a lot, you have to break that to about six or seven people filling those hours. Is, is, is that also a factor or anymore?
Well, I think, uh, when the 30-hour part-time cap was initial, initially established, it caused some angst, uh, for the police department in terms of scheduling those part-timers. But I think that has been sufficiently remedied now that, uh, council agreed to, uh, uh, allow a deviation from that policy. Uh, Chief, if you're still on, do you wanna speak to that or?
Um, what was the question, sir?
Uh, whether the 30 hour, the old 30-hour cap that, um, technically has been replaced with a, a new hire cap is still an issue?
Well, the 30-hour, oh, because if I have all the things, all available work, but I've already hit that 30 or 60-hour mark, then, yeah, that is always a thing. But meantime, that's why, again, you need more part-timers to cover. So I can't have a guy that works, you know, 50 hours a week and only works the third. So, yeah, so that 30-hour rule is always gonna be a, uh, problem, but it's something we have to live with and we have.
I thought that, that 30 hours was changed to 60 hours for two weeks. No?
Yeah, but still, still 30 hours wouldn't matter. I'd like, like 60 hours of pay period.
Yeah, he, he has some flexibility because it was changed to, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, Chief, but I think it was, it's 60 hours per pay period. So he could, uh, he, he could front-load or back-load in the, in the.
Oh, okay.
Two-week pay period as he needs more of the person, uh, and not.
I, I have a question, Scott.
And not be capped by that 30 hours.
I, I have a question, Scott. Would be, uh, if changing it from the, uh, you know, from 30 a week to 60 a pay period, that, that means that a, uh, part-timer could work a, a, a normal 36-hour shift in a weekend then. Because the 30-hour handcuffs the chief when he has to cover a weekend shift because the weekends are three 12-hour shifts. And it's stupid to have a 30-hour rule and you're gonna use part-timers to have the 30 hours because you're leaving yourself six hours short. That, so will that cover the 36 hours for a weekend?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, well, yeah.
What was done was that we are now allowed to do 60 hours in the pay period. It allows us to have five 12-hour shifts, pay period, which was a, a, a good compromise compared to the 30-hour rule, which really only lets someone work two shifts a week.
Right. Okay, that was my question. So for a part-timer, uh, with, with 60 hours in a pay period, can, can cover a whole weekend, if it needs to be 36 hours. Let's say he's got two or three hours overtime one night and he gets a late call, he's got paperwork or something. So he can, he can figure out if he do 40 hours in a, on a Friday, Saturday, Sunday and not put in any, uh, in any problems. That was just my question.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I think, I think that was the, uh, the, I don't wanna say negotiated, but the discussed and agreed-upon compromise to give, uh, the chief and the police department greater flexibility in you, scheduling and utilizing, uh, part-time pool.
Well, it's, it's not even, you know, pardon me for sounding a little angry when I say this right now, but I, but I am kind of upset. That 30-hour, in the limiting 30 hours, when you look at a weekend shift, it's 36 hours, okay? Whether it was legal, whether it was law or whatever it was, okay, that had to be one of the stupidest things done in this borough in, in, in my lifetime, was a 30-hour cap when you have a 36-hour shift, a 36-hour shift that needs to be capped. And thank God that got switched to 60 hours in the pay period because that was flat out stupid.
Oh, I'd like to thank you for the clarification.
If, if I may, the alternative to that is allowing people to work full-time hours and not giving them the same benefits as a full-timer, which really isn't a great way to treat people. But, so there's always more than one side to every story and there's always a good reason to each side, right?
Well, the 60-hour compromise should have done, should have been done at the beginning from jump street.
Okay.
When the chief requested it, it was changed.
Thank you.
When the chief requested it, it was changed.
Mr. Mitchell?
Well, whatever. It was stupid and it's over now. We have 60 hours today in a good period.
It's over.
So let's go over the motion.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes, sir.
I have a question. Uh, when is your, the end of your payroll week? Is it Saturday night or is it?
Friday.
It's Friday night. Okay.
Yeah, I believe Friday, yeah, Sunday to Friday is the, how the pay periods run.
Okay.
Wait, Sunday to Friday? That's six days.
Saturday to Friday, you mean?
Yes, Saturday to Friday. Sorry.
Okay. Anyone else? All in, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Tensions? Motion carries eight zero. Nine M. Call for a motion to authorizing the borough manager to execute pu, the public assistance grant program agreement with the Pennsylvania Emergency Management Agency, PMA, consistent with the declaration of the state of emergency due to the COVID-19 global pandemic, and to further authorize the execution of similarly associated documents. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Mr. Bauer, second it. Any discussion?
Yeah, God bless you. So, um, it just seemed, uh, very intense.
Yeah.
Some repetitive, but they really focused a lot on the floods. I, I was, I, I didn't understand, uh, I, I guess they didn't have time to rewrite something.
Well, I guess I didn't wanna reinvent the wheel. The, the historical, uh, you know, emergency response in Pennsylvania is storm damage related or blizzards or, or the like. Global pandemics don't come along every day, but an emergency is an emergency.
Anyone else? Sorry, did I cut somebody off? All right. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Aye.
Tensions? All right. I believe that's the end of the action items.
And it was eight nothing, every single one.
Every one. Look at that. All right. 10. Unfinished business. Do we have any unfinished business? Hearing none, we're gonna move on to 11. New business. Do we have any new business? All right. Hearing none, we're gonna move on to 12. Borough officials. Do we have anything from any of the borough officials?
I have a question for Mr. Mitchell. Is the, uh, library ready, uh, and been sanitized and cleaned for the June 2nd election?
The library has been cleaned while it's been closed numerous times.
Right.
Um, I actually was on a call with the county, I think it was last week. And they're intending to send a contract service around to all of the polling places to do the, um, the mist, the mister.
Like, uh, disinfecting the spray?
It's like a fogging.
Right.
Now, they're not doing the entire facility. They're only doing the portions of the facility that they're utilizing for the polling sites and common areas like bathrooms. Uh, but they're intending to fog all of the, uh, polling places prior to Election Day. And also if the venue wants, they will come back and fog it again after Election Day.
Okay, good to know.
Yeah.
Anyone else?
Just a comment that, uh, the assessment for the county was sent out and it looks like our assessment number's up a bit. Is that correct? Did I read that correctly, Scott?
Uh, yeah, I think.
61.
Yeah, it goes up a scooch and then down a scooch. It's always hovering around the same number. We prefer up.
Yeah. Yes. All right. Uh, anyone else? I just wanna remind the public that the food drive is Wednesday, May 20th from 3:00 PM to 8:00 PM. It's a no-contact drop-off at the Morrisville Fire Company at 328 North Pennsylvania Avenue. And the drive is being hosted by the Morrisville Fire, Fire Company and the Morrisville Police Department. Anyone else?
Uh, one question for the borough manager. Uh, when the time comes to reopen the borough hall and other things, I assume that will be posted on our webpage and Facebook page to get the word out. And if there's any changes to the, the process of coming in, if you're just gonna do one at a time at some point or, you know, appointment-only sort of thing, how's that gonna work? You'll have that.
Well, my prefer, my, my preference is that we keep it a secret. Things, things stay slow. But the conspiracy theorists everywhere are going nuts right now. Um, no, you are correct. And, and as I alluded to before, although I haven't committed date to paper because every time I do, the state extends things. So, uh, I think I'm jinxing it, but it will be a staggered approach that we take to, uh, reopening, you know? We will identify one week where we bring, uh, staff back, uh, to normal work hours. The following week, we'll, we will probably have the municipal building open for public access, but by appointment only. And then probably a week from that time, uh, we'll have the municipal building reopened fully, uh, for normal public access. Um, it'll probably be a similar version to that for, uh, how the library reopens. So that's the plan.
If I may, on that same vein, if I may, real quick, um, based on, um, uh, Chief McClay's, uh, recommendation, um, what would the plan be for opening up the dog park?
Uh, that would be done at the time that we do, uh, the playgrounds. Um, and we'll take them on a case-by-case basis, you know, the, the dog park, the tot lot.
Parks, not, okay.
Yeah.
Cause I, I think what the recommendation was, was that the actual playground equipment be the last thing to go.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, because there will be no, there will be no consistent effort to clean and disinfect, uh, playground equipment in between each use.
Right.
That unfortunately is gonna have to be the individual responsibility of the user.
It can.
But it, uh, isn't the dog park a little less, uh, less contact and so forth?
You still have to touch the same, go in and out and there's. You still have to touch the same, go in and out and there's benches that people may sit on and, and other people may come and sit on, so it's kind of the same.
I don't use it. You'd know better than I would. All right.
And water fountains.
Yeah, I, I mean, our, our parks are and have been open because they're not, they're not gated, they're not fenced. There's no really way to, to keep people out. What, what we have roped off is, you know, the tot lot, uh, the manor park playground. Uh, we, we locked the dog park. They took the, uh, Public Works took down, uh, uh, the hoops for the basketball, basketballs, so we'll unroll those one at a time as we go.
Okay, thanks. The other day, I, um, somebody brought down to, um, where the tennis courts are, the parking lot in front of the tennis courts, somebody brought their own, um, net and there were four guys playing tennis, which is kind of interesting.
Yeah.
So Scott, have you heard, um, have any of our small businesses, um, are any of them in trouble? Um, are, are there any of them in jeopardy or it's just too early to tell?
I would say they probably all are at some level, but I have not heard anything specific from any one business. That's, that's just the vibe I get from most of them. Remember, we had, what, four? Four, I think, uh, reopened just since, uh, last fall. So I can't imagine, you know, being a new small business on the block, that this has been, uh, a good experience for them so far. Um, so hopefully they're able to stick it out.
Uh, question, I, I heard today that cigarettes are cheaper in New Jersey. Now, whether that does, bodes well for us in the future or not, I don't know. Um, we know that's why they're here, it's because they're, we're a, we are a river town, but just a little tidbit. But I'd, I'd like to get with Scott on another, at another time. I wanted to talk to you. I thought Micah was going to be on tonight. I had a question regarding, the December final had a trash
He's here, so if you have a question.
Where are you, Micah? Okay.
No, he, he's here in the room with me, so is John later.
Oh, okay. Um, the final had trash recycl- receivable as $135,000. That was the end for the 2019 final. And then in March, that same line had zero, and then April, it came back again. So it's something I'd like to have someone check out, please.
Yeah, that could be some AMS voodoo. I'm not sure, but can you check that tomorrow when you have a chance?
Can I have a cycle?
Yeah, the 2019 final. I don't think we have one up here, do we?
Uh, yeah, you just sent it out, um, on the 3rd, I think.
Yeah, that's the audited. We had sent around an unaudited and then we sent around the audited just recently. But yes, we'll, we'll check the number and let you know.
Okay.
Okay.
Hey Scott, I have something, Robinson here. Uh, I'm having a little difficulty hearing. I'm driving a truck. I have two things that I wanted to, uh, uh, mention. Um, the, the staff afternoon was thrown on the, uh, paper about the, uh, county commissioners with a $6 million, uh, uh, release for Bucks County businesses.
Yes.
Um, like $25,000 a piece. Is there, now, I'm sure there's some business in the borough. Is there, uh, and there's everybody's going to be trying to get, you know, many people trying to get their hands on this possible. Is there anything, any connections that you have or anybody that you know that maybe, you know, help out somebody in the borough? Get, get them, you know, here to the top of the pile or to help, you know, then, then a business being on their own, applying for it, crossing their fingers and probably not getting it?
Yeah, I've been on a couple of calls with the county where the, uh, commissioners have been talking about that program. In fact, I believe it's, uh, Commissioner Harvey who has kind of taken the lead on, on that, um. We just recently got information on that, but I, I believe the county has devoted almost an entire page on their website strictly to that program. So certainly if someone is interested and can't find that directly, if they contact us, we will try to navigate them to the right direction. But I can't promise you that we can get them any kind of priority status.
But I don't know, priority, but you know, to stay, you know, maybe bump them up a little bit or, or help them out.
Sure.
Now, you, you, you look, you look at the county as a whole, and I don't want to make it sound like I'm feeling sorry for Morrisville, but yeah, we, with, it's not like we're getting the, uh, the long end of the stick historically down here, you know? You know, maybe, I don't know, maybe somebody in the county can put down on, on Morrisville and say, you know, what, what, you know, we're going to, we'll, we'll grab our way to help you guys out, so. Just throwing that out there.
Yep. We, we get immense cooperation from the commissioners and the county government and the state. They've been, um, very cooperative on, on many levels, so I expect that will continue.
Well, the cooperation, I mean, when it comes to money, I mean,
Yes.
There are a lot of them.
Yep. You said there were two things. What was your second?
Um, the, uh, the, uh, I'm not exactly familiar with the company right now, but the, um, the bills and the financial activity going on in April, namely the Keystone Building, $8,000 in April. Now, we were shut down for the month of April, $8,000, uh, get us for that month.
What, you know what? The barking, I couldn't hear what he was asking about.
Sorry, let me, let me, let me mute my, my mic. There's dogs out in the backyard that are barking at each other through the fence.
Okay.
He, uh, Councilman Robinson was asking about the Keystone Municipal Services invoice for, I believe, was it March or April? I, I think it was the April invoice, but it was for March. Uh, while we were closed, well, essentially closed, it was about $8,000, but uh, remember, we, we did still have activity going on, uh, during that period, uh, even though we weren't doing a whole lot in the way of new permits.
Sorry.
Uh, but
So that wasn't the month of April?
Uh,
Wasn't that the month of April? $8,000?
This was for March.
Right, it was in the April financials, but as I said, it's actually the March, the invoice for the month of March.
Okay, so we didn't get April yet from Keystone then?
Um, did we? I don't know.
No, I think the $8,000, um, Scott, April, and, um, it was $16,000 for March. So, so when you sent it in May, that's actually the April invoices, unless they're months behind.
Yeah, yeah.
Right. The, the $8,000 had, um, March and April, um, visits.
Yeah, it depends on how their billing period falls. It's not exactly beginning of the month to the end of the month.
Right.
But yes, we, we
We had several, we, we, two weeks in March were shut down. So I could see maybe a couple of things that might have been left in the, uh, you know, left in the pipeline, say, but, I mean, a, a complete shutdown on the month of April and a complete shutdown the, from March 16th to March 17th.
The 17th.
You know.
Yeah, Mar- March 17th to today. But, yeah, so you, you, your point is taken and I, uh, I scrutinized their invoices. And there, you know, just because the municipal building was closed doesn't mean there wasn't any work going on. There's plan reviews still going on. There were still, uh, for the most part, uh, permits and inspections going on. Um, not so much new construction and not so much in an occupied dwelling. Uh, but there is still activity going on.
UNOs?
Was it, what, was it, well, it would have to have been essential activity because I, I'm under the impression that basically everything was shut down. I tried getting the, uh, Verizon installed in my house a couple of weeks ago and they wouldn't come out because of the, uh, because of the shutdown. They said there's no
Yeah, they
There's no work going on.
Yeah, they won't go into any occupied structures. E- e- either were we during that period of time, but you know, if, if you have a contractor call who has questions about building plans he submitted, he submitted or a plan review that's going on or a permit that's pending, you know, we have to get back to that person. If the person wants to speak to the inspector uh, about a pre-inspection checklist item or, or a re-inspection or whatever the case might be, that business has to continue. I mean, that's
I, I, I understand that, Scott, but you know, I drive around the town and it's, it's not like Morrisville's going under a construction rent exception right now. $8,000 worth in a month that we're under a complete lockdown.
Were they doing UNOs also?
I'm sorry, Avena, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I was getting a couple of questions at one time, sorry.
Were they doing UNOs also?
Uh, UNOs were being done differently. We were letting transactions go and with the inspection to follow later, unless it was an unoccupied unit, then we might, would do the unoccupied unit.
Yeah.
But certainly for the case of occupied units, we were not doing active and you, even UNO inspections, no.
Well, uh, to Scott's point, that was one of the one things I wanted to bring up is that I, I still think in looking at the chart, um, and what they sent out with regards to the last three years, I think we should, I think we should be looking for something different and someone different. And I, there's, um, there's, uh, a li- there's a list that I, I'd come across of just last week. And I'm going to present, I'm going to give it to Scott and I'm going to ask him to submit it. And it's, it shows what, what really a code officer can and should be doing other than just what, what we're seeing on some of the invoices, but, but this was part of my discussion. I wanted to also mention that engineering, our engineering costs are at 130, 133% right now. And our, uh, attorney's fees, that's multiple attorneys, is at 80%. And, uh, we, I, I realize that things happen and we have to have an attorney. Um, but I really think we need to put the skids on some of these things. We just don't, we just don't have that kind of money. Uh, here it is, the middle of May, not even doing that as much as we thought we were going to be able to do in the last eight weeks. And we still have, uh, these kind of, um, bills. I just, not saying I have the answer, but I am saying that I think we really, I think they need, need to be scrutinized even more. Or thought about at which direction to take. I just, uh, it's a lot of money. So.
Ed, you're on mute.
Oh. All right, two, I have two things. Um, one, um, is there any way to get the bills from, uh, our code enforcement, from Keystone, basically, to be more descriptive, Scott? I mean, uh, you know, hours spent on reviewing electrical diagrams with absolutely no, no job number, no permit name, no nothing. Um, you know, there's dozens of them on any particular bill. Could that be more descriptive? I mean, they're billing by the hour. We should at least know what they're working on.
Electrical is actually flat rate. I'm looking at it now and each, each line item has an address associated with it.
There were 17 of them in the last, uh,
Yeah, there are, there are some, there are some jobs that don't have any information on them, on, on, on the copies that I were given anyway, so. Um, I know I brought that up to Micah and he was, he had hoped, told me at the time that that's the way they bill them out. So, um, I mean, I, you know, our solicitor gives us, you know, a, a, a bill that, that breaks it down into, you know, the portions of hours. Um, and with a description of what they, what they did. And, uh, just my last thing would be about the solicitor. I understand that the, the cost for the solicitor, you know, can get up there. But I would not be in favor in reducing any of our, uh, necessary costs with the solicitor. I mean, we can try to keep the cost down, but to try to cut and save money, you know, on the solicitor's end of it, could end up costing us millions with something missed.
Oh, well, just saying, I wasn't suggesting that we take shortcuts.
No, I know, but we can, we can try to work to eliminate some unnecessary billing, but, you know, there are things that, that get sent to the solicitor simply to be sure. Um, so they may seem, you know, unnecessary or frivolous, but there, there's a reason for them sometimes, so. That's it. Hopefully we're done so we can adjourn.
I'm, I have a list and I'm going to send it to Scott and I'll have him, uh, send it out to, uh, to everyone, uh, a couple of questions I have.
Stay healthy, Ted.
Motion to adjourn. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thanks. Bye-bye.
Bye now. It was nice seeing everybody, even virtually.